Hello, Bandi.
Yeah, how are you?
I'm alright, good thanks. How's things?
Yeah, very good.
Oh, good, oh good. Did you get my emails? I'm just sending them off individually this time because the files were too big and it couldn't go through one shot, so I'm just going individual now so that you get them in two lots.
Yeah, I'll get the last one.
Oh, okay, but I'll send it anyway because I've got the letter gone to Putin on his Facebook site as well. So, um, I just wanted to make sure. But I think if I get my... I'm on it all the time now to just make sure we got it all sussed out. Uh, uh, and I think Bill English just might go. I'm not too sure whether he'll go or not.
Okay.
That's all, that... huh? Any questions? Yeah, is it at Waipuna Marae, is it?
Yeah, it's in the 70s.
Yeah, because I'm gonna go straight up to Mangamooka and come down that way.
Yeah.
I'll just go straight to the Hui and go straight down that way so that I get there in plenty of time.
Okay, well, see you there.
Yeah, okay.
Bye bye.
Alright.
Good.
Okay, there's Bandi. I'm going up to the Hui, up in Pangaroo, and it certainly looks like it's going to be at Waipuna Marae. Um, so this is the latest today, Saturday, the 14th of January 2017. I'm just having to, um, call my native chiefs. You'll notice that they've got original surnames like mine, and you've got Bandi Waitei there, and Manahi Parapara, Moheini, and also Kingi Taurua, and Jim Wicotu, or Tupi, Jim Wicotu. I'm trying to get them on the phone. I like to get them on video because it connects them directly to these affidavit or visual statements. These are higher than an affidavit or a written statement that one word can go wrong in any statement if you make the wrong interpretation of letters. That's why I don't go by my statements, although the video backs them up. There could be mistakes in it, and spelling mistakes and things like that. Well, for your information, we're going through our own native court under the King William, uh, land conveyancing titles of the Clendon, Captain Clendon proclamation titles, okay? I think you'll understand that there's a separation of powers that we use straight into Britain or British Westminster Parliament through the memorials of King William III and King William IV. King William III, because of the connection now that I'm putting together, and I'll send it out to these chiefs to keep it formal as being exact to the document, to the contract, the Commercial Trading Bank of England contract, private. Private, that means we didn't have to show anyone, or even Maori, anything we do. It's the same as the Queen, is private contract. Everything that's in Admiralty court martial law with the seal on it is legitimate to its authority and jurisdiction of Admiralty. Admiralty means mortgage lien or levy, private contract, land conveyancing instruments, okay? So I've already said the chiefs, Terawaikato Faraherehere, Manakau, and Pomeru, Chief Pomeru II, those two chiefs had the handle or the legal authority as commercial landowners, okay? Commercial landowners that they would have known but never told anybody. See, no one told anybody about that side of it. When the Australian government sold the lands here without sovereignty over King at that time, 1834, 1830 to 1834 period, then Captain Clendon created in his government, in his British government and native land court with Pomeru, at 1830, created the, um, authority to make land titles commercially, um, saleable instruments under a King. A native contract developed in 1830 with Terawaikato Faraherehere, Manakau in Cambridge, England, that set the Manakau land title off with the Manakau Land Company in Scotland, Ireland. So with that, corporate company was set up right there with this flag coming at 1834. They started choosing a flag in 1830, the time of Pomeru and Terawaikato Faraherehere, Manakau and Hongihika. So those three chiefs are responsible for this commercial contract between a native chief and the King of England, end of story. Okay, that forms the title basis. On this video, as proof of claim on what I'm saying to this video in front of you all round the world, that I, Honi Kahaki Wanor, John, swear to Almighty God that I tell the truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God, there. Our God is the Maui Earth God statue standing in London, standing in Dunedin here and standing in Auckland as our mana fina title. That's got to go with a British land conveyancing instrument titled transfer. So the transfer title, transfer from Terawaikato Faraherehere, Manakau to the King through the Manakau Land Company, real estate company in Glasgow. That's where all the titles are. I'm going there to check them all out, but that's our private business with Admiralty, okay? So, um, Bandi, I think you've got it, right? I think you've got it. I'm just adding the icing to the cake, which is St Patrick's Order. The St Patrick has got a local borough council or local government borough council addition of the money collectors for the chiefs, uh, rent, land renters, okay? The chief of the hapu is a land rent chief, a legal land rent chief. He's supposed to collect the rent from the land. That's our job as sheriff, to collect the rent from everyone. On the 6th of February 2017, the flag of Admiralty kicks in. First time, the King's Bench, the Waitangi Marae King's Bench Native Court grand jury kicks into life. Okay, it's already been opened. We don't have to go through all of that. We just need to pass over the instruments to the government officials in person and just make statement in front of them. Kingi Taurua, chief, commercial landowner will say that inside the Waitangi Marae. We'll be sitting in there, the ones that I just named and myself. So we've got a grand jury, we've got a real native JP, justice of peace, judge in our court. We've got a marae with carvings on it that belongs to my chief, Uetaha, at the East Cape, and others, other hapus, carvings inside that Waitangi Marae as our title memorial. And on top of that, for the Pacific Islands, the Maui statue standing in the museum in Auckland, that one. And the one with the crown on his head in Dunedin, that's the one the party is put down there to claim the crown of the whole indigene, native title, land transfer to the King, the silent King. Right, the silent King. The Queen made the King silent, no more. Myself as the surrogate King, William IV, and King William III zipped it open and start talking to you on this camera as talking for the King when the King's absent until we put King Ernest Augustus the Fifth in and his son, Prince Regent Ernest Augustus. That's our job. We've already passed all those in Tatimarai and transferred them on the 15th of March, 15th of April 2016 last year, when Murray Robbiner, the Waitangi National Trust cultural manager, opened the gate and let us go inside to pass all those laws. Uh, Bandi, pass all those laws. We've got them all on Facebook. I put them there when we had the Treaty of Waitangi Day, celebration day on the 6th of February. I was there the third, the fourth, the fifth and the sixth. The third was the TPPA. I stood up and told everyone, we're gonna seize the marae on the other side and seize the whole land. That's what we're doing. We're already gone through all that, put them on documents. Kingi Taurua signed it. We only need one to sign it for the whole lot because this is an Admiralty's court. This is not the Australian New South Wales court. So there's nobody gonna come inside this court if you're not in this realm of King's Bench Court and the collection of his King's Royal Revenue. That's the part I'm taking charge of here with the pound note, levy debtor instrument that's already kept into life. We can bill it on somebody's name, okay? We're gonna bill your name. Once you get this on your name, you got a problem because we have our own legal system and the flag to go with it. You haven't got a King's flag. You can't operate with us if we don't have you on our system, see? So anyway, I just wanted to update, update you on the legal side of St Patrick's Order. The eight-point star here is the St Patrick's Church Order. Now, I've been looking at it very carefully. Between Wales, Ireland, England and Scotland, who owns the title, St Patrick's Order? Well, there's two sides of it. There is the historic family side of that man, and there is a commercial contract side of that man. So I'm picking the commercial side of that man in Northern Ireland or Belfast for that matter. And that's where that part comes from on the more Catholic side of King William, on the wife side, Mary. King William III I'm talking about in the 1690 period of his reign when he created the Bank of England. He also created this eight-point star, St Patrick's Order. Now you've got several parts to it. You've got several, several, um, legal entities to it. Um, and they're knights when they knight you, Knights of England, the most illustrious order of St Patrick. Right, the Knights of England Orders of Chivalry, okay? I'm saying this because I'm gonna document that all and send it out. It's all in front of the whole world, Orders of Chivalry in England, Scotland and Ireland. Wales is in England, so Wales, because they're not featuring on the British flag, it's already England, that's the original England. So they didn't have to put Wales there because it's already England, okay? The knights and bachelors, you see, every time they knight somebody, they're picking the money up for the King, not the Queen, for the King in the King's Bench Royal Revenue Court. In this case, the Waitangi Marae King's Bench Native Court, they're picking the money up in there. So I'm there with the King as being appointed by these four chiefs and Chief Kingi Taurua, okay? That's all that fits all those documents and legalizes those documents right through all the years of my Facebook. When you see a document and you see a video that's got King William on it or Maui, these chiefs have apportioned the authority for me to act in the capacity of the partner, King William IV and King William III, to talk for them because there's no one talking for them. There is nobody talking for them because they can't because they are our contract partner. When you're in a contract, uh, partnership and the flag, 1834 flag to receipt it, then no one can break that because we can sail around the world with this flag in that year of 1834, not the 1835 Declaration of Independence flag. That's Australia, New South Wales, Maori title, okay? The Maori is the Queen Elizabeth II and Queen Victoria title. That's less of a King. So you have a problem with this flag being interpreted two ways. So for all the Maoris and the Confederation of Chiefs, this flag is your New South Wales problem with Bill English and John Key and Helen Clark, okay? All the prime ministers in this country, you've got a problem with them. You're stuck with them and they're dead. It's over a half trillion at the moment, okay? Over half, that's your debt. In the meantime, this same flag, a year earlier, on the 20th of March, 1834, it is a King's flag before it became the other, what you did with it, what you did with it is affected by what we say about it. That's to make it clear in your minds, the difference between Maui and King William III, St Patrick's Order is in that year that we base our titles on. The memorials of King William III, King William IV and Maui statue to us, the live native surnames, okay? Always surname, that our colour of our skin and our blood and our heritage to Ireland. I'm in the Ireland area of the St Patrick's Order. And with Jamie Patrick on her, uh, uh, history of surname can speak for that side of it, but I'm doing all the work for her because she doesn't quite understand how that works, commercial side of the name. So I'll do all of that because I've got her signature. And the signatures we have is electronic because they'll say yes in the live to whatever I say and put. So when you see documents with the digital signature of Chief Kingi Taurua and Jamie, our Maori Patrick Stewart, then you know it's approved to use on these documents to authenticate that name. Taurua, Patrick, Wanor, Parapara, Moheini, Waitei, Taurua, Wicotu. There, I only speak for those names. I will not speak for any others. And Manakau, I speak for Manakau, Mohe Manakau, because I've got his signatures to speak for him and his family. One day they'll get all these back, one day, not yet because he didn't trust them. And I won't trust anybody I don't really know until I'm right up with them. It's taken me over 20 years just to get used to Kingi Taurua. Just to show you, we're stuck with it all the way through and that's, can't take that away from him or hipper, if you have. Unfortunately for you, we've got a long standing history here and a paper trail to go with it between me and Chief Kingi Taurua. He's the oldest on that marae, he's the last to say on his feet, when he stands on his feet. That's it. What he says goes on these documents of Admiralty. Mortgage, levy, lands, and King William IV, King William III, and King Ernest Augustus V, and King Edward, okay? He's King Edward and he's Queen Victoria. Kingi Taurua is a direct descendant and first right of claim to the Queen Victoria Trust. Don't argue, don't argue because the documents I put together are for that reason. That's why he's there. All your native, um, lands of the hapu, fine, that's not a problem. But when it comes to commercial contracts, do not stand in a row when there's a pound note floating around because it'll drop on your head. That's different to the land. It's not the land, this is the business on top of the land. You have to try and remove it. You'll find it very difficult to move any title on the land unless you're a King or make out to be one or something else. It's a waste of time being lawyer because they're not the landowners in commerce, okay? We're talking about landowners now in commerce. I'm saying the chiefs that I picked are commercial landowners. That's the money side, the gold side, all that gold. It's 1.7 million metric tonnes of gold now since Karen Hoodes has told the world there's another 700 million, 700,000 metric tonnes of gold floating around that she's just accounted for. So all I've done is picked up all that information and because she's the World Bank, ex-World Bank lawyer, then her word, that's it, whatever I say goes. There's nothing anybody can do to challenge it. You can't challenge it because those are King's words I'm saying that are using his name and his titles to claim his King's Royal Revenue in his King's Bench Court, right? So she's saying there's some more missing. And we've put the green pound note, the 970 million trillion trillion pound note right over the top of that. So wherever that is, we're gonna draw on it. I've already told these chiefs that we're gonna start drawing on that pound note in the ANZ Bank here and in the ANZ Bank in London, straight off, straight after Waitangi Day. Cook Street, you get the bill, the pound notes going straight on your heads. James Pearce Brown and Simon Brent Roundtree. I warned you, I warned you, Bailey's Real Estate, that you'll lose all your business. You'll get bankrupt with that pound note. Yours is coming individually, individually, your person, your natural person, not the humbug, fictitious corporate name. You're not going to hide anymore. And for those people who are following Donald Trump, I had confidence in him, but when he's gone with Israel, my whole idea about him changed. And he's in the same boat. He's in the same commercial contract of King William III and King William IV. Stuck there as debtors in that green pound note. Everyone who is enjoying her or accessories to Queen Elizabeth fraud that are proving here that she's committed treason is attached to everybody who's using her vice admiral laws in the banking of Rothschild Banks. It's gonna be bankrupt with that pound note. Telling you, these chiefs here, what they say goes in the grand jury. They're the grand jury. They can choose non-native surnames to come into that courthouse, but they will be selective of who they pick. I know Selwyn, uh, Henny, uh, Clark, he's one of them, see? He's very knowledgeable. He's a army man. I'll choose any army man. Kingi Taurua is an army man. He went to war. He's an army man. He has the right to be inside this navy, British Navy and chief's contract, you see? They've taken a long time. Kingi Taurua has taken a long time to accept the fact that the British are his real friend. That's not his enemy. It's the Australian ones that's his enemy that's causing havoc and havoc and corruption in Wellington. The New South Wales government, John Key, ran away. John Key, you ran away, but you've got this pound note on your head. You've got 1 billion trillion pound note on your head and all your property, the same as Barack Obama. He's got five mansions, he loses that to that pound note. This is for those people in America, the natives. Standing Rock, take note, this one for you. We are there to crack open all the fraud and corruption inside the federal state government that's screwing your lands, that's screwing our lands, it makes no difference. It's still the same beast, Queen Elizabeth II. I keep saying that. I'm going there to hang her. I have a right as Maui and King William IV to say that publicly and not regret what I say because it's true. She has caused treason on the King's Bench Court law of Admiralty. That's our business in private. When you're in a contract, we are the second and first party, King William III and King William IV, first party. Third party is Queen Elizabeth II and Queen Victoria, second party, third party, right? Third party. Your label as third parties, no matter what part of the world you're in, you're using someone's higher authority to stamp your authority on others with the St Patrick's Order, Irish. And that's why the Irish, the Welsh, the English, uh, and Scottish claiming St Patrick's Order for themselves, right? They have their own different St Patrick's Day, sometimes fighting in St Fain in Northern Ireland. We're in the Northern Ireland group with Belfast and Dublin, where our families' cast groves come from, and the Rogans being the Scottish and English on the other side of my family. So I've got reason to speak on their behalf in all of this King Revenue. So the revenue, uh, model came from Ulster, Ulster in the north of Ireland to Ulster here, the North Island, and Munster, the South Island. The Ulster is the overriding factor when it comes to collecting money on behalf of the King. And that's in Porirua. I've taken that model of Ulster has gone down there and they've put all the orders of the chivalry and the, um, um, most illustrious order of St Patrick, Knights of England, the Knights Orders, and put it into the local government borough council in Porirua, straight from Ulster in Ireland, okay? So they set this money collecting agency up and that's what I'm going after to call the account. To call the accountant. Whereas calling the counter to the chiefs that I'm going to be talking about up there. There'll be others, the old people know what I'm talking about. Most of Panguru is Catholic. The Catholic side of King William are on his wife's side, Mary. Right, King William's Dutch, remember that. He's Dutch. He's not Scottish or Irish. He's Dutch, Normans, Vikings, that side. Okay, so bear in mind the name Zealand, New Zealand, Zealand is his title. Okay, he's his title to these lands, and that's what I'm going on. Zealand. King William the Third, Saint Patrick's Order, chief, flag. Admiralty jurisdiction, Bank of England, created by King William the Third. And the collection of money created by King William the Third. For renting the king's crown lands. Okay, all the crown lands in the world belong to the king, not the queen. Okay, so Queen, your days are over, as far as I'm concerned. Because the king is silent no more. No more silent king in the court. The rascals, the rats in the swamp are caught. Red handed, okay? So, that is the last bit uh to you, uh Bundy and to you, Manahi. Uh, I'm not worried about mistakes on my documents, by the way, because that's our court. We can write any way we like. They can't judge us in a High Court of Admiralty or any court in New Zealand. They can in Britain, England, but not here, not any other country. We're played by the rules in England. When you get pulled into court, you have to go to England, John Key. You have to go to that court. To be tried, but we're building you straight off. Pay now, lock up later, okay? That's our, that's our, that's our law. We make the laws here. We make, we're using eighteen thirty to eighteen thirty seven acts of King William the Fourth, because we're allowed to. And we're using the acts of King William the Third all the way back, when he first became the king. Okay, sixteen hundreds. And so we're using all his acts as our authority, as his partner, as their partners, those two kings' partners. Okay, we're using their authority and jurisdiction on these lands. That's why you can't match it. You'll lose in any court hearing where we're involved with the seal. This seal and the Maui seal, the Maui seal and this seal. It's the highest court seal in the world of commerce. Banks, mortgages, loans, pound notes. And that's why we are allowed to use the pound note and the gold coins. All that gold will recover with the British military and all the militaries in the world we pay to recover it. That's my job to our um administration. In Scotland and England and here in New Zealand. These chiefs I choose to pick. Okay, so that's just to put it across to you. Um, nineteen thirty-three Hitler, Germany. Um, six countries, North Island Protestant, the Protestants. Fighting with Catholics. Right? I'm just looking at my notes. I'm, I'm, I'm going over and over and over them. The Boer War in South Africa, right? That's the Bill of Rights sixteen eighty-nine, see, that's King William the Third. The Boer War. That's when these natives here went to the war in South Africa. All of that still means the same titles. Sixteen eighty-eight Netherlands, King William, he's from the Netherlands, Haag. Okay, that's where King William the Third, King William the Fourth is Haag. They come from Haag, that's where the court is. We go straight in the court, no trouble. But we go into Westminster, because Haag is only for international courts. And we don't have to go and prove ourselves in that court which belongs to us anyway. Okay, you got that? That's our business in that court that tries anybody, so we don't have to go and take our court hearings in there to be tried. What we say, go straight into Parliament and fix the parliament up. That's the problem, the parliament itself. Okay, and the local government is Parliament picking the money up through the local Borough Councils. King William the Third of Warrens, that's, that's where that comes in. So we're, 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 we're using the Northern Ireland here as the blueprint. On the eight-point star of our flag with the four corners of the earth. That King Philippe, King of Spain, is wearing four stars. I'm going to put four stars on here too. Because it's on our flag. The flag is higher than his shirt or his coat with the four stars on, because he's not Irish for a start. He's Spanish and he has no right to that Queen Victoria Trust gold. Although he's stacked it up in Philippines, because he's, he's the. He, he's the son of uh Amelda and Marcos. And thinks that he has a right, legal right to that goal. No, he doesn't. He's not a trustee. I'm going to England with these native chiefs to sack the queen and that lot. Then settle the account of treasury, it's from treasury. You'll find that all the money's gone to EU Parliament, where she's gone and hijacked the whole treasury in England. I'm going to have that audited. By the navy and the military. And we can create a state of emergency war. That's what Clendon, Captain Clendon of the British Navy ship. They gave this flag as the flag of New Zealand, then declared war on Honihica in eighteen forty-five. Or somewhere in eighteen forty-four, declared war on Honihica. And Honihica was on the side of Clendon. That put the titles together to sell the land, one native against the other. One with the brains to do land title, conveyancing instruments and bank loans and money. And the other chief that wanted to fight, hmm? So Honihica went to England, same time as Chirawakato Farahiri Manukau. The Manukau went to learn all the commerce, banks, conveyinging instruments, land titles. How to make money out of land. And Honihica went there to learn how to do conquering of lands. Because he had nothing to do with the money, but he had everything to do with the land. That's fine, because he can still do that now. All his descendants can still protect their lands, but very difficult for them to get all these. Commercial titles of it, because it's got people with guns on it to stop you from taking your own land back. So the only way to do that, to get your land back, is to leave it to Honihica. And uh to, to leave it to Honihica and Chirawakato. Sheriff, to build them off the land, okay? You're going to price them off the land, not going hit them with a stick and do the hacker. Very soon the hacker will be out of debt. It'll be like marijuana laws. You don't need laws anymore for marijuana, everybody's been smug. See, so they put laws there to stop you from making a lot of money. And so we take the power to use money away from them. That's how you do it. You don't go and have hui after hui after hui for another a hundred and eighty years trying to find out why you're getting screwed. You go and screw the screwer. You get it? You screw the screwer with their own documents and their own laws. Not your law, because you haven't got a law. They can do what they do. So you're going to have to play the game of commerce. That's all I want to say. I'm happy to say that I've got this far with uh um finalizing things in a bit of time. I've got twenty-one day notice uh from this, what I'm sending today, which is the fourteenth. Two, um, fourteenth, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Twenty-one, the fourth, the fourth, from today, the fourth of February is twenty-one days notice. Because I sent the notice out already, but the emails didn't go through. Some got it and some didn't. And so because the files are too big, bigger than twenty megabytes. So now it's gone through and I'm sending it individually this time instead of a whole group of them. Because it just smut the whole lot up and rejected them. Uh, and because of the files being too big as well, so I did it through the um, um. Microsoft and it went through. Uh, just a little bit of touring around to get, to get everything in one place rather than, it's come out in two logs. Two emails and send it individually, because I think I'm sending it two or three times to some people might get um. Um, upset, but um I can't help that, because it's, it's such a lot of information to put to you. And publicly, it's going straight on Facebook, everything I'm doing today, uh emails I send, go straight on Facebook, so there's no hiding. No one can hide from Maui, no one. It's going to hide away. Uh, and for Donald Trump, uh I'm saying this to you. Do not tamper with that gold you're thinking of making money out of in the Philippines. Because it has got a problem in the nine eleven, New York. Um, disaster of that um twin towers with the steel being cut on angle. It's been a demolition job. A professional demolition job, and that's gone under this pound note. You're going to have to pay for all those people who were murdered in that building, all those families out of this pound note. You got that, Donald Trump? You're taking on a debtors role and you could be liable to lose everything. If you step out of line between me, the surrogate king of this flag. And over your king, your Queen Elizabeth fraudster as well. So anything that you touch with her name on it. You're in trouble with this flag and these native chiefs and those native chiefs over there as well. Those people have the upper hand in the native titles that have come out of this native title here. And these two, these three chiefs I'm talking about. Okay, that, that's gone right through as a blueprint for all your native titles, seized lands. And into the king's royal revenue, prized positions, okay? So, um, that will legally put these documents as being sufficient notice to respond. You must respond to any allegations I make against you, people. Your name, your photo, your video of you on these documents in front of the whole world watching. If you do not respond to another video of your own, not a statement, not a written statement, a video. If you don't respond with a video to challenge what I'm saying about you, then you lose. You lose by default contract. Okay, so John Key has defaulted on a contract. In other words, he's liable anytime now, before even Waitangi Day. I'm only going into the Marae again to bring together all the other chiefs and. Uh, uh Confederation people to the flagpole, to put the flag up to the top. For their sake and for our sake. So I'm not leaving them out of what I intend to do. With the surname native chiefs and non-surnamed native chiefs. That I so wish to choose. Okay, so if you're operating uh outside those parameters, legal parameters. Then you have no say on these contracts with the king. No, no say at all, even though you're flying the flag. For what reason? You have to explain on your own land, Marae. And not in front of us inside the Waitangi Marae and on Titi Marae. We'll be talking two sides of the coin, two sides of the flag. Alright, so we respect you and you respect us. Suna Kora, you'll be there at the uh Waitangi um celebrations and also in Titi Marae. Uh, I respect you, you respect me for talking for Maui and King William the Fourth. Commercial land title, not your native land title, okay? That's your job and the Hapu's job to do native title. I'm talking about what's stuck on top of it. And gone around the world from all the resources taken off the land and wrecked it. That's the part I'm doing. The British side of, they're supposed to be watching what's happening here with John Key and his governments. They're not. They're liable for not keeping an eye on them as checks and balances. There ain't no checks and balances on John Key. They're free to do what they want with Maori, because they own Maori. They don't own Maui. The British have got a hold of that. We're going to negotiate with the British about Maui. And our part of shared governing. Right, we have a Maui Crown Federal State Commonwealth Government of the world. Running right now legally from the Waitangi Marae King's Bench Native Court on the fifteenth of March. Fifteenth of April two thousand and sixteen, pass that too. As being a Commonwealth of the World government where this flag has gone around the world with the queen, right? She might have done dirty deeds with it, but the revenue that's been collected in the name of the king is our business. As contractor with the king. She hasn't got a contract with the king. She has no contract with the king, commercial. Right, you had to have the documents, commercial documents and live natives. Those Maori Ewi chiefs are not native. Land uh owners under King William the Fourth. They come under the New South Wales government of Queen Victoria. You got it? You got it? Someone created all their laws. It was a king, not a queen. That's the difference. Okay, we are the principal private contract partners in business. Right, I think that's all I need to say for this video. I think that's long enough. And so I'm not going to the, the uh gym today. I'm just going to carry on and sending these emails, because they're going to take me quite a long time to do. So from me in Odooh, Okrue. You'll see some clips that uh De-Ha is putting together, uh put for the flag and some explanations. That'll come out in videos and the more I can tell you what's happening, the, the less I need to talk about it when it comes to big meetings or hui. On Marais, you should know, because if you don't watch them, you would never know. Those who watch the videos knows what's happening right here in New Zealand, affects the whole world. Under a king's. Law. Creator of the law, creator of the Bank of England and creator of the pound note. So there, I want to show you the pound notes one more time, just wait. You'll have to excuse me for dressing like this. Well, I can dress nice. You can dress nice, but when I'm working like this, I'm doing research and things, then that's the way I am. Um, it's quite hot here and this is how I go around in my normal attire. I like being free and easy with what I do. Now there is the pound note. You see Jamie there? And myself, she's the Patrick and I'm the Wanoa Maui Live People. Okay, Patrick and Wanoa Live Natives, okay, from New Zealand. Not in Ireland, but from New Zealand. So her Patrick name is attached to this pound note. As an authority that allows us to print this pound note. Let me get an instrument from Saint Patrick's Order. All of it's contained in there and the coat of arms of King William the Third and Fourth. And the gold, you see this gold dragon? That's the gold that's missing. God's, God's um, uh inheritance gold in these earth. That's what that is, okay? So this is a levy debtor instrument of nine hundred and seventy million trillion trillion. Single pound note, okay? So that's all, that, this, I'm just. So that's all, that, this, I'm just doing what the Bank of England and the Rothschilds do. They make big notes, not this big, but they make big notes to force you to buy it. In your currency and convert it to your currency, that's what they did with the US dollar as fiat money. And screwed everybody with the fiat money because they did the same thing as what I'm doing, created a note. And then sold it, you see, if I sell this note and do the same thing as the Rothschilds bank are doing. Then it overpowers their notes, okay? It shuts their notes down because people are gonna buy this note from, straight from the king, not from a third party. You get that? A third party is playing around with the king's notes when we are the contractor. That the king gave the notes to, chief Taffey. In the Waikato area of Chirawakato, Faraherehere, Maniche. Okay, you, you see, you see the penny drops? When you start talking facts, they stack up because it's on the record, you can't help but read it. On my Facebook, so. I'm happy to say the green is the green part of the Saint Patrick's. Um, you've got different colors for Saint Patrick's, orange for orange, it's Dutch. Saint Patrick, uh, uh, King William the third is Dutch orange color. Saint Patrick, this, this is the original green Patrick where we. And our DNA is to Ulster or Northern Ireland. Not the Free State South, which is the South Island here, Munster, okay, Free State South. And, um, so that's what you get on your head, Bill English, you've already got this because I've already sent it to you. And through John Key, John Key's attached to this note. And he's attached to the other note. Which is. If I can find it. I've got the other blue note. Seem to have lost it, now here it is. Okay, so there's a trillion pound note there. One trillion for each individual single person who gets caught up. With their name on our site as a levy debtor, you get a trillion pounds straight on your head. The other one that is like this to John Key in New Zealand, the land itself. Is one billion trillion, just the land itself, okay? So it's a blue one like this to all the ones that'll go on the land will be in this color. Against the land, okay, interests, it can be used on any single person. So the one for. Cook Street. Is twenty six point. Five, six, seven million pound note on the land, okay? Each of those. Fraudsters in there gets a trillion pound note on their head, straight off. That, the, the, their bill, their, their properties and their wealth comes off. That nine hundred and seventy billion trillion trillion pound note, so they're getting a trillion pound note on their heads. Person, their, their natural name, I'm warning you in this video. That these notes are legal tender. The cash on you, so when I come back from Waitangi. The NZ Bank. Will have to. Honor this trillion pound note on each of your heads. Forty three of you got in my row and I was arrested unlawfully arrested by the police. The whole lot of the police force gets one of these on their head, they got liable by Tim Duffy. They were liable by Aaron Pascoe, these are C I B. And they were liable by Natalie Flower Dew Brown. You liable them all, Natalie Flower Dew Brown, and for my birth certificate. You're getting some more on top of that for stealing that of me. And for you, Shannon Withers, barrister, I didn't get my court hearing. You went and helped those other boys get off their case and left me out of the court hearing. And when you came out, you said to me, John, it's all over, but I never had my court hearing. I, I got you, I hired you for my interest, you didn't honor me and my citations. I never got my day in court, now we're gonna have our day in court. In Waitangi Marae, King's Men's Court, and you're going into the High Court of Admiralty in London. You're going to have to face them and stand there and I write this on your head, a trillion pounds already on your head. We can start sending the sheriff around to seize all your land and your property, everything. That's your mistake, fatal, when you deal and tamper with the king's royal revenue.